one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Start this meeting with comments from the audience?
No.
Yeah, okay. The first thing we are going to do today is we're going to close the regular school board meeting for a budget public hearing. So if I can get a motion to close the meeting. Get a second.
I'll say.
I would want to be.
Rodney, go ahead.
Motion made by Becky White, seconded by Rodney Bruff. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Meeting is closed. I need glasses all the time. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Brett makes the motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Becky, you have three seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Public hearing is open. So Chad, play a lock is here.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so yeah, we're going to first hold your public hearing for the 2026 budget, the capital projects plan, and your school bus replacement plan. I've just got a few short slides that I'll run through. Feel free to ask questions as I go through here. Yep, that's it. Yep. Oh, no, sorry, sorry. There should have been another one. Yep, that one. Yes. Yeah, you can go to the next slide for me. This slide here, I won't go over this. I've gone over this slide with you guys before. It just kind of talks about the different funds, which you'll be approving a budget for in October. If we go to the next slide. This talks about the property tax-supported funds, again, which are part of the budget hearing tonight, the debt service fund and the operations fund, which are our property tax-supported funds. Go to the next slide. This just kind of outlines the process that we went through to, you know, the budget that we're having the hearing on tonight. Lan and I worked very closely in collaborating with coming up with the numbers and the assumptions and different things like that. The notice to taxpayers, which is the Form 3, was published on August 27, 2025. The capital projects plan, the school bus replacement plan, were all submitted to the state via Gateway, and those can also listed on your corporation website. All that had to be done 10 days prior to this hearing as the notice to taxpayers. Just always as a reminder, the purpose of this budget process and this budget hearing that we're going through is to establish appropriations for Salem Community Schools' 2026 budget, establish a property tax rate for '26, establish property tax levies, and also allow the public a time to comment on the budget. Then at the October 13 regular school board meeting, you will be adopting all of the resolutions, which I've listed there, that'll go along with this budget. Okay? On the next slide, this is just a copy of the Form 3. It's also known as the notice to taxpayers. It's the form officially giving your community notice that you're having a public hearing on tonight and that you will be adopting the budget in October. And it also lists the estimated budgets, the estimated property tax levies, and it also lists the prior year tax levies. This slide, I just wanted to throw in an example, just so you could see historically what your assessed value has been, going back to 2019, what your property tax rates have been for each fund, and also what your property tax levies have been for each fund. Your assessed value for your township is out, and your assessed value for '26 is up 7.24%. We probably have about 70% of the schools that have AV out. We have everywhere from schools that have declined by five to some that have grown by 20. So I would say you guys are right around the average as far as AV growth goes at this time for 2026. So in '26, what I'm showing you there is not what we are advertising, but that is our plan of what we think the property tax rates and levies will come in at. We are targeting that your debt service tax rate remains flat from '25 over to '26 at the .5008. Okay? And I believe that's it. Yep. Are there any questions from the board that you'd like for me to answer?
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment to the 2026 budget plan documents? Okay. If I can get a motion to close the public hearing on the budget.
Make motion.
A motion made by Becky White, seconded by Becky Humphrey. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, public hearing closed. Can I get a motion to open up the public hearing on the additional appropriations? Ty Sweeney makes the motion.
I'll say.
Seconded by, I can't see.
Brett.
I know, no, like fuzzy. I'm sorry. Seconded by Brett Mitten. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Hearing on additional appropriations.
So as Lena and I were going through the budget process, we did notice that in your education and operations fund, there was going to be a need for have some additional appropriation in this calendar year. So when the 2025 was, budget was made in the fall of '24, there just wasn't enough appropriation included in that budget to get you your expenses through December. We also have in your operations fund, a pretty sizable additional appropriation, and then that is for the 12 buses that were totaled out during the flood. And so you will be receiving those dollars when you receive them from the insurance company into your operations fund and then turning around and buying those buses. So that was over a million dollars, and so that obviously was not accounted for in the '25 budget when it was created last year. So you do have to have a public hearing anytime you do an additional appropriation, and then we'll be asking the board later in the meeting to approve the additional appropriation resolution. Okay?
Just for record, the additional appropriation, this is something that's pretty common.
It is. Yeah, it is. You know, we try to avoid having to do it, but there are times that an additional appropriation process that we do have to do that. Yes.
Any comments from the audience specific to the 2025 additional appropriation? All right, if I can get a motion to close the public hearing on the additional appropriation.
Should I make a motion?
Becky White makes the motion, seconded by Steve Mott Sanger. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Public hearing is closed. If I can get a motion to open up the public hearing on the project and preliminary determination hearing.
Makes the motion.
Becky Humphrey makes the motion, seconded by Brett Mitten. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to hold a public hearing. Because I need to clean them. Okay, there you go. Project and preliminary determination hearing. Chad will be conducting that.
Yep. Thank you. All right, you can jump to the next slide. So this is your second preliminary determination hearing for your bond issue coming up this, this year. This slide shows your current outstanding debt payment, annual debt payments. You can see that you have one, two, you have four outstanding, current outstanding bond issues with what those representing the annual payments are in the bar chart. Can go to the next slide. These, this is your estimated debt service tax rate that corresponds with the debt service payments that were on the previous page. So bond issues being repaid by property tax, this would be the estimated tax rate to go along with all of your current debt. Next slide. Then, I don't know, it looks like something must. So what this is showing is it is showing your proposed 2025 bonds in dark blue. There should be numbers that show up there, which obviously aren't, that should, that would show the repayment schedule for the current bond payments and also show, you can see the tax rate remaining level at just over the, just a little over the 50 cents out through 2027, even with the new bond issue, leaving you cliffs, tax service cliffs in '28, '29, and then all of your debt then being repaid in '24. This slide just shows the estimated breakdown of the, the funding of the dollars once you bring them in. The par amount of the bond being 16,620,000, that would be the total cost or bond issue amount that you would bring in. 6 million of that would be your project fund. You are going to have to have a little bit of what we call capitalized interest. That would be 441,333 in 2026, and then you will have some costs that are associated with issuing bonds, and we're estimating that at 178,686.
And it's 6,620,000?
Yes, will be the total par amount of the bond issue, yes.
You said 16,000.
Oh, did I say, sorry, not 16,000. Thank you for correcting me on that. That was a big, big difference.
There are people listening.
Yes, yes. 6,620,000. Thanks, Thomas. This slide just kind of summarizes everything about the bond issue. Again, the par amount being 6,620,000, estimated cost of issuance, cap I and underwriter's discount, kind of bringing everything together that was on that previous slide, 620,000. That leaving the school 6 million for their hard and soft project cost. Estimated interest rate anywhere from 2% to 6%. I can say, I can tell you today, probably around 4.3% is what a bond issue of this size would be selling for. Maximum term per the bond issues, 20 years. In the state of Indiana, you can repay bonds up to a full 20-year term, and this will be going out 20 years. The estimated total interest cost being 3,945,000. The maximum annual payment in one year being 1.2 million. The maximum tax rate impact being .2095, but the net impact, because you have other debt falling off to the debt service tax rate, the net impact being zero. School corporations' max annual payments as a percent of your NAV is .58%, and your direct and overlapping debt as a percent is 3.88%. I believe that's it. Yep.
Are there any comments from the audience regarding the project and preliminary determination?
Our max interest rate is capped at 6%, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Brett makes the motion.
I'll say.
Seconded by Becky Humphrey. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to open back up the regular school board meeting?
Motion.
Becky White makes a motion. Seconded by Ty Sweeney. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. All right. Let me catch up here on the page now. All right. Approved minutes of the executive and regular session, August 11, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Becky Humphrey makes the motion. Seconded by Becky White. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Approval of amended agenda. Ty Sweeney makes the motion. Seconded by Brett Mitten. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Approved claims to date.
I'll make the motion.
Rodney makes the motion. Seconded by Becky Humphrey. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. I'm going to read all of these together for the approval of personnel recommendations. Mark Carter, retirement from SHS English teacher at the end of the '25, '26 school year. Daniel Ponder, stipend for additional IT hours. Erin Humphrey, stipend for additional IT hours. Brendan Roby, maternity leave, FMLA, October 2025. Jamie Malloy, medical leave, August 20, 2025. James Logan Davidson, family and medical leave, beginning 9/8/25 through 11/3/25. Brian Mott Sanger, volunteer football assistant. Abby Maynard, volunteer softball assistant coach. Trent Wyckoff, student teacher with Mrs. Medlock. Allison Cook, SMS teaching, one period of eighth grade science. Monica Spalding, BSE Publications. Melissa Cobble, BSE out-of-state field trip organizer for the St. Louis trip. Karen Davidson, sub-bus monitor. Rebecca Marquand, transfers from sub-bus driver to full-time bus driver. Rhonda Vernon, sub-bus driver monitor. Seth Prule, activity sub-bus driver. Justin Levers, volunteer football assistant coach. Leah Stidham, volunteer varsity volleyball assistant coach. Kristen Best, resignation from SES bus monitor. And ECA recommendations, 2025, 26.
So, motion.
Ty Sweeney makes the motion, seconded by Brett Mitten. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Consider approval of Exhibit A project resolution. That was what we just did.
I'll make that motion.
Brett makes the motion.
I'll second. Say something.
He was up for questions, if you might have any questions.
Yeah, I can absolutely answer any questions if anybody has them.
Look, you drove all this way. We need to ask you something. Okay. Seconded by Becky Humphrey. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Consider approval of Exhibit B preliminary determination resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Rodney Bruff makes the motion, seconded by Steve Mott Sanger. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Consider approval of Exhibit C declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures. Becky White makes the motion, seconded by Rodney Bruff. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Consider approval of addition, wait, that was what we just did. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2026 minimum teacher salary requirements.
Number eight.
Oh, I did. Okay, sorry. It's all running together. Consider approval of an additional appropriation resolution. Brett Mitten makes motion, seconded by Becky Humphrey. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2026 minimum teacher salary requirements. Ty Sweeney makes the motion, seconded by Becky White. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Consider, we have got a few out-of-states. Can I do all these together?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Consider approval of an out-of-state field trip to Bystown in Louisville, Kentucky for the fifth grade class on 3226 to 34. Mr. Zidor. Consider approval of an out-of-state field trip to Kentucky Center for the Arts in Louisville for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade ELA classes on December 17, 2025. Mrs. Collins, Mrs. Henry. Consider approval of an out-of-state field trip to Kentucky Center for the Arts in Louisville, Kentucky for the third grade class on November 25, 2025. Mrs. Bundy. Consider approval of an out-of-state field trip to Louisville, Kentucky for the volleyball team on September 8, 2025.
Listen, we have Mrs. Bundy. Mrs. Bundy, what are you guys, what's up?
It's Christmas past, Patrick ever.
Okay, beautiful.
Very fun.
They put on a really good show.
Thank you.
All right. Becky Humphrey makes the motion, seconded by Becky White. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Consider approval of the Ascendant Facility Partners LLC to do a facility overview. Ty Sweeney makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Mott Sanger. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, so what that is, is we're going to have a group come in and take a look at our energy consumption and how we can save money by doing certain projects or lead over to try to figure out how to make things cheaper or make things more efficient.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero.
What does that cost again?
Zero. Zero.
Well, and there's a lot, I mean, just looking at how to be efficient, I mean, you know, so there's a lot of things we're looking at, especially when you're just rising cost in energy.
So you already have an estimated cut Duke energy increase, but you're looking opposite.
I mean, that's coming in what, 2027, is that when you said that is?
That's coming down the pike, there's going to be a lot of hoops they've got to jump through, but it's, it's coming down the pike. Of course, we all, we all read it in the paper and listen on the radio, we, we know that Duke has gone to the state now, just about all four quarters of the, of our great state asking for increases, so we're in that list as well.
Well, it's always nice to be checked and for free, you know, just to kind of see where we can make some changes or do something different.
Absolutely.
I love it, love it. Consider approval of growing up and growing wide sexual health curriculum for Brady Shrum Elementary, Salem Middle School, and Salem High School.
All right, so the state of Indiana has passed legislation that any type of sexual health curriculum should be presented to the public before it's presented to students in the classroom, so what we've done is we, we are following state mandate to put all this curriculum online and also make it available to any parent who wants to come see that curriculum, so they can see what their student's being taught, they can decide to allow their student to not be taught the curriculum, they can opt out of the, of the class, so new law, new state laws, right?
Okay, there we go.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Becky White makes the motion, seconded by Becky Humphrey, all in favor, raise your right hand, motion passes 7-0. Consider approval for three high school students to work for the IT department for the 25-26 school year at $10 an hour with half of their salary reimbursed through the Indiana Work and Earn Partnership.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Rodney Bruff makes the motion, seconded by Steve Mutt singer, all in favor, raise your right hand, motion passes 7-0. Consider approval of school improvement plans for 25-26 for this high school, Salem Middle School, and Brady Shrum Elementary.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Ty Sweeney, seconded by Rodney Bruff, all in favor, raise your right hand, motion passes 7-0. All right, now for the fun stuff, and I know we're, this is just where we're missing Kim Thurston tremendously. Okay, number 2221, the mandatory curriculum, and I'll be reading the first and the last sentences off these statements, policies, and this is a first reading for all of these. In compliance with the Indiana Code and federal law, the school board directs the superintendent to prepare and implement and supervise courses of instruction in the following areas as stipulated in the Indiana Code and the regulations of the State Department of Education. The superintendent shall establish and maintain procedures related to the provision of human sexuality instruction and the administration of personal analysis, evaluations, and surveys to students. Second policy, 2410, audio, video, and digital recordings of meetings. The school board believes that the education of children is a joint responsibility, one it shares with the parents of the school community. The board realizes it has the responsibility of protecting the rights of students and keeping and sharing student records. If the school corporation audio or video records or otherwise digitally records meetings, such as parent-teacher conferences, meetings under section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, discipline-related conferences and the like, the resulting recording shall become part of the student's educational record and shall be maintained in accordance with state and federal law. 2414, reproductive health and family planning and human sexuality instructions. The school board corporation, the school board believes that the provision should be made for the teaching of reproductive health, family, family planning, human sexuality, and the recognition, prevention, and treatment of transmitted infections as essential ingredients in a comprehensive school health education curriculum in grades 4 through 12. The superintendent shall prepare administrative guidelines to implement these curriculum components. 2416, student privacy and parental access to information. The school board respects the privacy rights of parents and their children. The purpose of this policy, the term parent includes a legal guardian or other person standing in, such as a grandparent or stepparent with whom the child lives, or the person who is legally responsible for the welfare of the child. Which one is that? 2416, okay. 2461, recording of IEP team meetings, case conferences. Pursuant to state law, the school board shall not adopt a policy or otherwise prevent the parent of a student from recording a meeting concerning the student's individualized education program. If a corporation audio or video records or otherwise digitally records an IEP team meeting case or case conference, the resulting recording shall become part of the student's educational record and shall be maintained in accordance with state and federal law. 2623, student assessment. The school board, in compliance with law and rules of the State Board of Education, shall implement the State Board-approved statewide achievement test to assess student achievement and needs in English Language Arts, Mathematics, Social Studies, Science, and other designated subjects in order to determine the progress of students and to assist them in attaining school corporation and Indiana Department of Education goals. The superintendent shall establish administrative guidelines to implement this policy. 3220.02, supplemental payments for teachers. The school board authorizes the superintendent to issue a supplemental payment in excess of the salary specified in the school corporation's compensation plan to any teacher at the discretion of the superintendent when doing so is in the best interest of the corporation's students. Supplemental payment provided under this policy is not subject to collective bargaining, but a discussion of the supplemental payment may be held with the exclusive representative of the corporation's teachers at the discretion of the corporation. Number 5111, determination of legal settlement and eligibility for enrollment of students without legal settlement in the corporation, proof of Indiana residency. The school board establishes the following policy for determining student eligibility to attend the schools of the school corporation. If the number of students who request to transfer to the corporation under this section causes the corporation to exceed its maximum, maximum student capacity, the board shall determine which students will be admitted as transfer students by a random drawing in a public meeting. Wouldn't that be exciting? 5200 attendance. The school board as an agency at the state is required to enforce regular attendance of students. The superintendent shall make available to all parents and adult or emancipated students the board's policy and the corporation's administrative guidelines on attendance. Number 5223, release time for religious instruction. The school board desires to cooperate with those parents who wish to provide for religious instruction for their children, but also recognizes its responsibility to enforce the attendance requirements of the state. No solicitation for attendance at religious instruction shall be permitted on corporation premises, no staff member shall encourage or discourage participation in any religious 5517.01, bullying. The school board is committed to providing a safe, positive, productive, and nurturing educational environment for all of its students. The superintendent, superintendent is directed to develop administrative guidelines to implement this policy. Guidelines shall include reporting and investigative procedures as needed, the compliant procedure established by the superintendent shall be followed. Number 5600, student discipline. The school board acknowledges that conduct is closely related to learning and that an effective instructional program requires an orderly school environment, which is in part reflected in the behavior of the students. No student shall be suspended or expelled solely because the student is chronically absent or habitual truant as defined in policy 5200 attendance. Number 5605, suspension and expulsion of students with disabilities. In matters related to the discipline of students with disabilities, board shall abide by the federal and state laws and regulations regarding suspension and expulsion. The superintendent shall establish administrative guidelines and require that the guidelines are followed when disciplining any student with a disability. Number 5610, suspension and expulsion of students. The school board recognizes that removal from the educational programs of the school corporation, whether by suspension or expulsion, is the most severe sanction that can be imposed on a student in this corporation, and the one that can, and one that cannot be imposed without due process, since removal deprives the child of the right to an education. The information documents ESI and electronic media as defined in Board Policy 8315 Information Management, created or received as part of an investigation of student misconduct or disciplinary, disciplinary action taken, shall be retained in accordance with Board Policy 8310, Public Records Board Policy 8315 Information Management, and Board Policy 8330 Student Records and the corporation's records retention schedule. Okay, 5611, due process rights. The school board recognizes the importance of safeguarding a student's constitutional rights, particularly when subject, subject to the school corporation's disciplinary procedures. The superintendent shall establish administrative guidelines to ensure that all members of the staff follow due process procedures when dealing with students. In addition, a statement of due process rights is to be placed in all student handbooks in a manner that will facilitate understanding by the students and their parents. 5771, search and seizure. The school board recognizes its obligation to balance the privacy of its students with the school corporation's responsibility to provide students, faculty, and authorized visitors with a safe, hygienic, and alcohol-drug-free learning environment. The superintendent shall prepare administrative guidelines to implement this policy.
I got a question, I got one question.
Okay.
I got distracted when you started reading those, is there possible you could read through those again?
If you want to go get me another diet, I would be happy to, but that's going to take more caffeine than what I've been allotted here.
Good job.
All right. Can I get a, do I have to get a motion? Okay, okay, all right. Fundraisers, I will read all of these together. Back-to-school party for sixth, seventh, eighth grade ELA classes on 9/5/25 to 9/19/25, FFA Blueberry and Blueberry Jam sales on 8/20/25 to 9/5/25, FFA Fruit and Amish Good Sales on 10/25 through November 14th, FFA Pig Meat Raffle on November 14th to December 14th, FFA Greenhouse Flower Sales on May 2nd, 2026, BSE Counselors fundraiser on August 15th, shirt sales, BSE Steam Holiday Shop on December 1st through December 20th, SWAC Program and Student Incentive Programs, November 3rd through November 14th, and April 20th to May 1st, Field Day and Student Incentive Programs, September 8th through September 22nd, Salem Boys Basketball Home Football Games Raffle, Salem Soccer Boys BSN Team Store, August 29th through September 25th, Middle School Volleyball Team Food Supper, September 8th, 2025, Volleyball Team Silent Auctions, September 5th, 2025, Volleyball Team Clothing fundraiser, August 18th through August 29th, 2025, Volleyball Team Shirt Sales for PJ Beister Volleyball Programs, August 5th through August 20th, BSE Texas Roadhouse Gift Card fundraiser, October 27th through November 21st, Salem Military Club Participation in the Honda Trail at Buffalo Trace Park in Palmyra, BPA Selling Country Meets 25-26 School Year.
I'll make the motion.
Becky White makes the motion, seconded by Rodney Bruff, all in favor, raise your right hand, motion passes 7-0. All right, any items from staff? That's not Jennifer Martin, this is, I know, I'm not looking at her, I'm looking at you, Anna Hamilton, Amy. No, no, all right, any non-action or transportation update?
All right, all buses are out and moving, and things seem to be going in a good direction, so as we move forward, we have recovered from the great flood, so we should be in good, in good operation there, so.
Very good, very good, any non-action items? No, new board business? All right, superintendent's report.
Yes ma'am, thank you so much, we start teacher negotiations coming soon, we'll have our opening meeting for that, I think maybe Monday, so as we work through that, we'll keep everyone informed when we get done, and I'm sure it'll go very well, so with that, we're also looking at curriculum, school improvement, we're looking at dual credit and associates, working toward associate's degrees, and also, we're looking at vocational class work and how we can provide certifications for those students and allow them to get certifications when they complete their, their schooling here at, in, at the high school and at Prosser Vocational School, so a lot on the plate, we're continuing to divvy that up and just add more.
Good, thank you. All right, Ty, I'll start with you for positive prizes.
I'm ready.
All right.
So the Lions Cross Country team, they competed at North Harrison Invitational, the boys placed third overall, and then Rafe Wells rece, Rafe Wells received a second-place trophy, Ethan Cooper received a fifth-place trophy, and then Luke Baldwin received a 25th-place medal, and then for the girls, Abby Dene, Dene, is it? Dene, thank you, she placed sixth and received a sixth-place trophy, and then, last thing I have is be ready to get your McDonald's Thursday, because our teachers are going to be working there, so I will be getting my McDouble, so.
Very good, Brent?
I want to say, and this we do this almost every meeting, both the media program, the things that are out there on social media is great, the students have done a great job with that, and the staff recognized middle school students of the month, Clark Senzer, Really Brown, Isaiah Borden, Reese Wilson, Cheyenne Vernon, Ellen Schmelz, and then some staff member of the month, Mrs. Stevens, and I, to piggyback on what Ty was saying, but all the full athletic teams are playing hard and representing SES well, I, you know, things I've seen have just been great, so I want to congratulate them. The band invitational, Saturday, awesome event, good job, and then the Salem FA, FA teams are starting their competitions, and I look forward to seeing their results.
I am going to kind of go with Brent on that, the sports have been fantastic, and the weather, everything's been going good, the band invitational, it's good to get that back.
Yes.
And it's good that we could have a facility to host that, and heard wonderful about that, and, but on all of our sports, or every, or all of our activities, outdoor activities, we've had beautiful weather, which has been wonderful, but to kind of go back to Ty, my teacher works at McDonald's, it's going to be Thursday, this coming Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00, and 20% of all the sales during this time will go directly to teachers for the classroom and supplies, so that's a total giving back, and you're giving to your family great food, and you're also giving back to your classroom, so anyway, can't beat a Big Mac, I'm a Big Mac girl, so.
What's that?
You can't beat a Big Mac.
A Big Mac?
Big Mac, anyway, so just remember that from 5:00 to 7:00.
To, just to touch on the, the media, so nice that you guys stream the ball games for free, and volleyball games, and anything, you know, related, it is, it is very nice. And then the second thing was the concrete and the little tables and the umbrellas behind the football field, it looks amazing, I mean, it just, I, first time I saw it was Friday night, and I just couldn't get over it, it just looks wonderful, so.
All right, Rodney?
I was a jump all the way to me, I was still here, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, so I'll, I'll jump on that creek area there, thanks to Ms. Dr. Gooden here for coming on board and cleaning that area up, there has been some people that's reached out and said they brought their kids over here, been walking in the creek on the really warm days that we have, and they've, they're starting to clean all the way down, closer to the city line that we have there, thanks to. Thanks to Jeremy Lee and the Military Club, I also, I, I serve with the Department of Defense with Cadet Command, and a lot of your ROTC programs are going away, and a lot of colleges are, they're going, they're, they're gonna have to combine, so they'll be going to certain colleges, as will high schools, so for us to have somebody who's continuing to do this is huge for us to give kids opportunities to do stuff like that, because there are a lot of empty scholarships that sit there every year because of that. Salem Band, they're awesome. If you haven't been to a football game and watched them, they stayed the whole time and they, they rock, and then they played at halftime, I missed that because I went in for the coaches' meeting at halftime, but I didn't see it, but it was, it was pretty cool. Mr. Beister, who, Beister, who is our, our bus driver, our softball bus driver, the volleyball bus driver, and he also drives for the football team, who I've, so I've rode on the bus with him of everything except for volleyball. They're having a dinner tonight, I went there before I came here, and they'll probably have some soup left if, if you get time after here to give to his family, who's currently battling, battling cancer, so our thoughts and prayers are with him, most importantly. And also, our softball mum sale, we just finished that, and I wanna give thanks to Cornucopia Farms, who have partnered with us for the last eleven, twelve years I've been coaching, and that's, that's about almost five thousand dollars a year we get from selling mums, huge mums, so, and then the mum mania just started last week, so if you need somewhere to go to get pumpkins or whatnot, they're going out towards your way there, Dr. Gooden, in that area, so huge deal for us, they're great people out there, and we use that money for the kids. We buy shoes, we buy bats, we buy all kinds of stuff, lots of hoodies and anything we can, so we have a lot of people who give money to our school and time and effort, and thankful for all of them as well.
Well, I'm just glad to be back, it seemed like I've been gone. But, you know, I just, I've been driving around a lot lately, I got a little extra time now, and I look at our campus and our sports facilities and our school corporation in general, I am just so, so proud of what we've been able to accomplish and, and how the place is looking, and, you know, I just, I don't think we could have done a better job with what we've already done and started, and I'm proud of all the people that work for us. And I did wanna comment on the band, it seems like our band and also the director, they've just done a tremendous job, and they've really, Mike Rodney, they really are rocking and doing a great job.
Good. Luke?
I know it's already been hit on, but Friday night, the game, the band did a great job, you know, hosting the invitational, they do a great job with that as well. JD's broadcasts, I've, I've been able to watch those and not miss a lot of events, so that's, the students have been doing a great job with that, they, they're awesome. One thing I would say is our professional development day we did on August eighteenth, I've heard a lot of good, positive comments from staff and faculty, so just wanna thank our teachers, our instructional assistants, our administrators for, for making that happen and, you know, doing good things for our students moving forward, so.
Good. One thing that hadn't been hit on that I had just seen that I thought was really neat was I loved out of the elementary, instead of, like, the student of the month, but it's based on, like, character development, and so, like, each month has a different quality. I think courage was one, you know, what was last month, consideration?
Courage was last month, this responsibility.
Responsibility, but the character development and initiative, you know, recognizing that for the students, I love that that's tied into a recognition for them as well, so I thought that was kinda cool to see. And lots of good things going on, you know, Paulo, you have something you wanna say?
I just want to tell you, because we brought up a couple times, certification, the associate's degree is a great thing, and we've had several students get those, but we also have a lot of students, maybe they have more credits than an associate's degree, but they don't finish it out because they wanna take the art class or the band class or don't wanna take two classes at Ivy Tech. So I think it's great to pursue it, but I also, sometimes the students just get a little too stressed trying to get everything worked in, so just for the record, I wanna put that out there, that's why maybe the numbers, I, I think we did a great job, but.
I was gonna say, there's, it's been pretty impressive through the years.
But, just, you know.
Agreed.
It's come out two, last two meetings, so.
I think we're just trying to meet all the different areas that, you know, and meet needs of students, it's not anything more than providing all the opportunities that we can. All right, if nobody has anything else, then we can get a motion to adjourn.
Well, I'm free to do one question. Next meeting is October thirteenth, no, that is outside, isn't it, outside of the fall break, I was checking to make sure, I was checking to make sure, okay, we're good now.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, next meeting October thirteenth.
I'll make the motion.
Becky Humphrey makes the motion to close the meeting, seconded by Becky White, all in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting adjourned.
There's lots of stuff to talk about.